Thank you. Our agenda tonight, council is a briefing from staff on an update to some proposed revisions to code eight four D eight three D. These are our parking regs. Some ground rules before we start. This is an information item. The council's at liberty to ask clarifying questions. But please don't represent a position, an opinion on whether something's good or bad. That will come later because this hasn't gone through the process. We don't have a recommendation to consider from planning and zoning. The intent tonight is to update you on the work that the staff has engaged in to get the discussion regarding updating our parking regulations in the process. So again, if Ms. Thornborough presents something and you don't understand it, please ask her, but don't express an opinion and don't interact with each other on it. So with that groundwork, floor is yours, Ms. Thornborough.
I think you, Mayor, and members of the council. And just for future knowledge, this file will be filed under CPA fiscal year 2022 number six. And since the code was updated in two thousand eight last updated, there's been significant changes within the city. Part of that's just market use changes, et cetera. A mine to a more minor extent, car sizes have changed. And most notably, there's been incredible growth in redevelopment in Garden City and in the Valley. And as this council knows all too well, parking in Garden City, it gets a lot of criticism. Ranging from too little parking is required of redevelopment to too much parking is required of redevelopment. And there, there is some concern that the roadway widths are too narrow to accommodate current on-street patterns. I don't know where this is doing that. And so per, for example, our long forty-second street where you have parking on both sides, vehicles are a little bit larger than they used to be. Market trends towards larger vehicles have happened since the streets were initially created at fifty feet. And then you also have buses. And so that's where that criticism can be. And in going through this process, we've heard an awful lot of criticism of the government regulating parking at all. And in going through this process, we've also heard that some are concerned about lack of enforcement and certainly that there are unclear requirements. And there the city has reached out over the summer. There was a parking perception survey that was conducted and sent out. We had a hundred and eighty-four people participate in that survey. A hundred and forty, I don't remember the exact number, but it more than a hundred and forty did request to be interested parties. So they've, those hundred, one hundred and forty individuals have been notified of the next steps. And then staff has also reviewed a number of codes, all neighboring jurisdictions, codes that are not even Idaho codes, theories of best practices, planning theories, et cetera. Discussions with CCDC, discussions with ULI, et cetera. There are a number of strategies that can be taken to address parking. And certainly, this is just a smattering, but metered on-street parking seems to be one that at least in the parking strategy perception survey that got a lot of traction. It seems that that's a fairly popular strategy that could be implemented. It's also out of the options that are available, relatively inexpensive option that's available. There are things to consider with metered on-street parking. The first and biggest, which is that it would require ACHD approval and that Garden City doesn't control the streets. But and the meters, the idea behind meters is that it would keep parking fluid and available for others to utilize parking. And the revenue from the metered parking could offset some of what would be required program for city, for the city to administer that. And then typically metered parking will have actual physical meters and the city is lacking in many areas of sidewalk. And so in reviewing metered parking, there are different technologies now that don't rely on that meter. There could be an app system that could be employed in it. And that would reduce the cost to install the meters and also be more feasible where there aren't sidewalks already in place.
Jenna, is that technology kind of like the, there's a park app I've used downtown?
Uh, Mayor, thank you. I think that's exactly like that kind of a program. So two in particular that are noted in this are Air Garage or Honk. And so if you're a business that participates, you might have an iPad right where you could you could validate somebody's parking that has on-street parking. Or it could just be a little QR code and you stick your license in and you say you're in this zone. And then you'd, your car would need to leave that zone in a certain amount of time or you'd be subject to, to getting a showing.
Park mobile. I learned about that. You had to go downtown and I had no change. Anyway, go ahead.
Um, thank you. It's a perfect example that it's right here in local. And another strategy that would require that those that are having uses that require parking go towards onsite parking would be removing on-street parking and incorporating enhanced say bike facilities and whatnot, which would reduce that public parking component, but also increase the alternative transportation modes. There could be permitted parking zones, say where it's been most suggested to the city where it would be residential permitted zones. However, like removing on-street parking or the meters, that also is contingent upon ACHD approval. And one major constraint in addressing the parking utilizing this method would be it wouldn't solve any parking problem if there's already a perceived parking problem, if everybody ended up with a permission. And it would also require a city to administer a program. And it may reduce options for businesses who hope to have patrons visit or that vibrancy, a community where individuals might go from one business to the next. They'd have to go move their car if they're doing onsite parking. And then the most taxing and expensive strategy would be to provide off-street parking facilities. That could be either public or private. They're certainly expensive to construct, especially if they're not surface parking. They would require administration, et cetera. And if it's a, a private parking facility that would be utilized for regulatory purposes, that would certainly take a very robust system for a department to be able to administer. But tonight, oh, we're going to talk about regulatory approach. But before I, I get there, a suggested approach from staff is perhaps the city look at more than one strategy to create a playbook of strategies where there may be maximizing on-street parking facilities with the exception of arterial roadways or roads that perhaps are part of an arterial active, not an arterial, excuse me, active transportation network. So there may be a street that's going between, say, the, the bench pathway to the green belt where the city council may request to remove on-street parking and put a bike lane to assist that. But for the most part, staff would suggest keeping on-street parking to actively enforce public parking regulations and provide a metered parking, parking permit hybrid program. So if you're somebody that just doesn't have parking available onsite right now, you could come get a parking permit where you might have metered parking. And then review parking codes. And so as you're all very well aware, the regulatory changes would be citywide. And would need to facilitate both preserving existing neighborhoods and intended neighborhoods and vastly urbanizing, to facilitate the vastly urbanizing growth that the city is seeing. There are four potential changes that are proposed to the city by staff. The first of which is repeal parking code in its entirety to address parking. Then the, the council would need to look at another approach, as we've already discussed. And the most common way to address parking is use specific codes. If the city maintains a regulatory component. And so that is every single use that's identified in Garden City code would have some sort of ratio that would be required. And because the city is built out and there is a lot of reuse of structures right now. For example, a very popular coffee shop was a motor vehicle shop previously. Same, the Visual Arts Collective used to be a mechanic shop. If, if you had a use specific parking regulation, as those structures change over, as every business changes over, then those businesses would have to identify, especially if they were deficient in parking or to find additional parking. And, and so there's a suggestion, suggestion that perhaps consistent criteria may be applied. So all non-residential uses, right now it's penciled in at one for three hundred of net square feet could be applied as, as an approach to address non-residential parking. Or there could be a hybrid where the council could choose to address certain uses and, and not other uses or certain components that have been proposed or are being proposed or not. So there are certainly some latitude in what's presented. And then to get into the meat of what is out for public review right now, and the purpose and applicability, staff had suggested that the city's not getting a lot of complaints about that and to leave that relatively the same. Staff has added federal ADA assessable parking requirements, which are required anyway, as well as stall dimensions, which aren't necessarily required. Those are consistent, the stall dimensions are consistent with the city, with what the city of Boise currently has. And those federal ADA assessable parking requirements, while they are definitely something that are required, it seems that individuals that are redeveloping by it not being in Garden City code can be confused that they do need to provide ADA assessable requirements. But it's in the, it's in the international building code as well as a federal regulation. So the use standards, there, there are really two options. Use specific or consistent criteria. Option A is that one to three hundred of nets square feet that could be applied across all non-residential uses. And then again, option B is use specific. And so there is quite a bit of changes that have been proposed in that, in that right now Garden City code is silent on non-residential uses. What the criteria should be there. And then there are also some amendments to increase the bicycle requirements for multi-family. There are, there is some language that really should be more in property maintenance standard that staff has suggested relocating into those property maintenance standards as it would apply for those, for all properties over time versus as a property is redeveloping or changing use. And there's been quite a bit of criteria added on how to calculate the, the spaces particularly for the one that's use specific, because it could be a number of seats, it could be square footage, it could be all sorts of number of lanes for a bowling alley, et cetera. But it, it talks about what to do with fractions. It talks to, about what to do with different situations that would occur as applying the code. And then there is currently code that is alternatives to parking facilities. Staff has suggested that perhaps that be renamed to equivalent parking facilities. And that goes through a whole list of what individuals could do to have alternative parking facilities or reduce the number of parking facilities that they would need onsite if they implemented alternative criteria. For example, there could be a reduction if some, if a multifamily development offers bus passes to all of their, their tenants, or there could be forever parking reductions if transit infrastructure or sidewalks or bus or bike paths are installed. It, it starts looking at where there are natural uses that, that may reduce criteria. So for example, if you have two houses that you're building, or let's say four houses, two guest parking spaces might make a whole lot of sense. But if you have a hundred units that you're building, having guest parking at one per every two units, the city's heard quite a bit about how that's not the many people's ideal ratio. Another may be affordable housing. Depending on the AMI, you may have less access to single occupancy vehicle and so reducing that. Or if you have live work, having criteria where you have an employee onsite and you can demonstrate that, maybe you can reduce one space. And so there's a whole list of alternatives that have been identified. From unbundling of parking to car share to parking agreements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's also been criteria added. If the rest of the code doesn't make sense and it would be essentially a taking how to reduce the parking. Loading was very slightly amended and as already noted, some provisions, it's suggested to relocate to property, property maintenance. And then there is a section of code five one four that doesn't allow for parking that would need to be long enough if the city were to go towards permitted parking. And so that would also need to be amended. This Thursday, there's an open house or the quote unquote neighborhood meeting. And with this application, we're doing something a little bit different. We're doing a virtual open house as well, hoping that people fill out a survey ahead of time. And they can do that in their pajamas at ten o'clock at night instead of having to come down to city hall. And if you haven't received that, I'm happy to send you the link. Or you can take your phone up right now and see if that QR code works. And to note as well that that will be open until November twenty-first, even though this Thursday is the on, the in person. The next steps, we're doing a work session tonight with you. There will be work sessions with the design consultants and with Planning and Zoning Commission. This Wednesday with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do have that virtual open house going right now. The, and we will have the in-person open house and we'll incorporate any of those comments into the documents and review the comments with your recommending body and the design consultant. And then there's a pretty aggressive public hearing schedule for the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear the proposed changes in December with city council hearing it in Jan, the first meeting in January. And I, I'm going to go back to the previous slide. In this one, and just note that many of the changes probably would not be controversial. It could be fairly easy or clerical in nature, cleaning up. However, there are in gray, there are three areas that I, I think will have a lot of input and people saying have a lot of feelings about. In option B, if, if the city does go that route, identifying the correct criteria for uses and trying to imagine all future iterations of what those uses might be or what the uses might entail. I suspect that there will be quite a bit of discussion and back and forth on that. And the added criteria related to the equivalent parking facilities, I think there'll be a lot of back and forth on that. Is X percent the right reduction? Is this the right amount, et cetera? And so I think that that could definitely take a little bit more time to make sure that it's flushed out. And then perhaps the reduction criteria, making sure that that's what the city, it's working with the way that the city intends it, that not everybody would automatically go and try to do a conditional use permit because they don't want to adhere to the parking regulations. And with that, I am very happy to stand for any specific and pointed discussions questions for discussion.
If we had, just to kick around for clarification, the metered parking. Is the issue with getting ACHD approval because there potentially would be improvements in the right of way, i.e. a physical meter? So if you did the app strategy, for example, there wouldn't be a role for ACHD in that?
Um, Mayor, thank you. With every application that the city receives, the ACHD comments on, ACHD does comment that parking cannot be on-street parking cannot be counted to somebody's intended parking strategy just because ACHD does control those roads. And they could widen, even though particularly like the numbered roads. It's not very likely that we'll see a bridge crossing or something that would turn those into collectors. But in that they own the roadway, we certainly, regardless of any improvements or not, would need to get an agreement and buy in from ACHD.
Okay. Okay. So it'd just be, if we went that direction, we'd come up with a plan and, and specific locations, et cetera, et cetera. And run that through a process if, if that's the direction we went.
Mayor, members of the council, it's in this very long report. But it's staff's perception that there are actually really a few areas within the city where the perception of parking being an issue is an issue. Where if you look at that parking perception survey, there are areas of town where the responses were more, I don't know where the, the parking is sufficient. And so the, if the city were to go that route, perhaps there are areas like the Live Work Create District or over towards forty-second street, that could be pilot areas or may take care of the perception of constrained parking.
And the same would be true for, if you consider a form of permit parking.
And Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. The, the report that staff has generated, it gets into the weeds on this overview that, that we've just heard. Takes some time to get through. It's, it's a little tough to, to grasp everything in one, one iteration. Really wanted to kind of get this introduced tonight to get the council thinking about how best to familiarize yourself with it. When was the workshop with planning and zoning?
It will be this Wednesday.
It'll be this Wednesday.
Five thirty.
And will it be basically an informational format like this?
Mayor, it will be very similar to this.
Okay. So with that, you can get another listen. We zoom those meetings to?
Mayor, we do, and they are posted online to the YouTube video.
System's working, you can, you're so inclined, you can, you can listen in again. And then once we get through the public comment phase and it's, and it comes back through the system in the form of public hearings. There'll be certainly some public input that potentially could influence the decision. The Plan and Zoning Commission, that will be forwarded in the form of recommendation to us. And then, of course, the council will have its prerogatives through a public hearing process and deliberative process to evaluate what's come before the planning, zoning, and ultimately up to the city council and the public input and and kind of mesh all that together and that that can be done expeditiously, or it could end up with, with a remand if there's significant changes that the council wants to have considered and, and run it back through the process. So is that generally correct?
And Mayor, that is correct. Thank you. And, and part of the reason that I showed that there are sections of code that may be very difficult to get through in such an expedited manner. The city understandably does want to address parking. There may be another way to address it too, in taking a two-tiered approach. Immediately fixing code and then maybe working on some of those tables and criteria or adopting those and knowing that within six months, you anticipate seeing it again, or something along those lines.
Okay. And I think that, that that question of whether that could be done, if I remember right, Councilmember Jacobs brought up somewhere about filling a gap and then more thorough evaluation and action later. So, so there'll be a lot of ability for the council to there'd be a lot of information for you to absorb. So for my part, I'm going to try to get as familiar as I can with the packet that, that came out. So I have a baseline to understand what's coming at, at us in the future. So any other clarifying questions for Ms. Thornborough? Understand what's coming at, at us uh in the future, so uh, any other clarifying questions uh for Ms. Thornborough?
Mr. Mayor, if, I mean, if there are no questions of Ms. Thornborough, I could give a little historical background since we have a few minutes.
Sure.
Um, I went back through mayor and council, I went back through prepping for tonight, the last time that the city looked at admitting parking code. Other than the Searl Mitchell repeal uh was twenty nineteen, and that was Title V. What Jenna's talking about is in Title A, and she's talking about maybe consolidating some stuff into Title V or twenty, or Title A. But what happened in twenty nineteen, we looked at Title V parking code, and that was re, and what was amended in twenty nineteen was the forty-eight hour rule. Prior to twenty nineteen, somebody could not park on a public street uh for longer than, uh, they could park there for as long as they wanted to. Twenty nineteen, the city council decided to make a change. Implemented the forty-eight hour rule, so now in Garden City, people cannot park on the street for longer than forty-eight hours. Um, and so that's Title V, and what she's talking about is Title A, but it's pretty interesting for those that weren't on the council back in twenty nineteen, it is kinda interesting. I can report that those go to trial, I can report that um we get convictions on the forty-eight hour rule, but. This is really the first time that we've taken a deep dive on parking, um, even though it's a different context, but it's been a couple of years. And so I think it's, the, the time is right to take another look at it.
Great, thank you. Okay, um. Think that's it for the work session, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and we'll convene the council meeting at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Have mine printed? No, I said I have mine.
Thank you.
I think I wanna put it on the computer.
We're ready.
We're ready?
We're reporting.
Okay, uh, I wanna welcome everyone, it's Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. And ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Clerk a call roll, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you, uh, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Next item is changes to the agenda. We don't have any from staff. See anything from council, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I knew that we approved the consent agenda as written.
Second, got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Here now, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, next item, F one, ordinances, resolutions and contracts. I'm sorry, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. I'll read the proclamation into the record. Whereas the government of Garden City, Idaho celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two percent of the net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas seventy-nine percent of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses. In their community on Small Business Day. Should be Small Business Saturday. Seventy percent report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers. And sixty-six percent report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas fifty-eight percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business and fifty-four percent reported they dined. Or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, cafe, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in twenty twenty-one. And whereas Garden City, Idaho supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as a small business Saturday. Now therefore, I, John Evans, Mayor of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-sixth. Twenty-two, twenty twenty-two as Small Business Saturday. Okay, item G one, uh, this is resolution eleven thirty-five dash twenty-two. This is the resolution to consider renewal of a service agreement for canine care and management services. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three between Garden City and Homeward Bound LLC. Authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Proclamation drives me out. Okay, um. We have a number of you here, uh, there are uh. That wanna discuss the lack of a program in Garden City that deals. With drop-off and care for cats. What we're gonna do, I think I sent a note out, uh, we're gonna discuss the Homeward Bound. Contract renewal, which has nothing to do with cats and is confined to servicing dogs. Uh, action on that does not mean uh that we aren't willing to hear and enter into discussion on how we deal with cats. But we have to have a mechanism in place to deal with dogs. Dogs are licensed, they are considered a potential public health risk. Because of their size and some aggressive nature, we have to have a way to deal with those. Uh, failure to renew a contract tonight and having to do something differently and negotiate something differently, I can't have a gap. So, we're gonna be uh discussing uh the merits of the Homeward Bound uh initially here. Uh, contract, and then we're gonna get into the discussion with you. Uh, I think, as my understanding, Donna, you're gonna present the, the presentation. Oh, Heidi will, okay, I'm sorry. It's my understanding, Heidi, that you're gonna present now the, the presentation uh with the slide deck. And um. Um, I've asked Heidi to contact me with her contact information. Uh, so that we can discuss some strategies and some of the challenges that we've had with the Idaho Humane Society, you'll hear. Uh, as far as our history and our attempt to have a hybrid contract in the past. Uh, so you can understand uh that we might need some help. Uh, in encouraging uh a willingness on their part to get a hybrid. Contract of some kind or a specific mechanism to deal with uh cats. Uh, you'll also hopefully, whether you agree or not, will under, gain an understanding of why. We've taken the canine program uh in-house. Uh, it's not just money, it's money and service uh to our community. And you'll hear from our police chief who is uh has specific comparative statistics. Uh, on uh how that program for dogs is justified. But don't misunderstand that, that we aren't interested in hearing your concerns about uh cats. And maybe how we can figure out something that we can do that. Uh, gets us a little closer to, to your interest in taking care of cats, so. Uh, it's, Zoom is on, uh, and I don't know if he's logged on or not. Uh, when we get to that point, uh, I'll let you know, and uh you can present the. It's an unofficial, but nonetheless, we'll treat it as a petition uh of people that have expressed interest in this. Uh, Lisa is on the end here, that's who you'll hand it to, and then uh that'll become part of the record of this meeting. Uh, and then uh. Uh, Heidi, I'll have you, when the time comes, I'll have you come up and. Uh, present your information, uh, we all have it in our packet, you can take us through that. Uh, questions, uh, we'll go ahead and, and field questions to you if, if council has any. And uh then others certainly are welcome to speak, uh. I wanna let anybody that wants to speak, speak, uh, the. Uh. The council is used to hearing things over and over and over the same thing, if you feel compelled to do that, I wanna give you an opportunity to do that. Uh, if, if you're in agreement with another speaker, uh, you can let us know that as well. So with that, um. The specific topic, topic is the Homeward Bound uh contract that we'll deal with first. Uh, Chief Allen, why don't you go ahead and come up and. And uh. Chief, if you would, uh, give us a little history, uh, kind of a before and after, uh. I think, did all of you read in the packet, just a little summary I did on the background? Some of you didn't. Uh huh. Okay, some, I've got some blank looks, uh, so. Uh, historically, Garden City had its own. Uh, animal control, uh, dealt specifically with dogs. Um. And uh built a kennel and. Uh. The, the history that the chief will get into here in just a minute, uh, when. The Idaho Humane Society uh offered a contract that would fulfill that. Service as our agent to deal with the regulatory issues with dogs. Uh, for about what we were spending, we went ahead and contracted with them, again, the contract was, was for dogs. Uh. Then uh, in twenty nineteen, uh, when the renewal time came up. Uh, they doubled the price, and we had a. Uh, we had a number of things to consider, not just the price, which, which the chief will go into, so with that. Brief background, uh, um, why don't you take it from there, chief?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, welcome to everybody in, in the audience. Let me start by saying, when I became chief, I was not. We are in law enforcement, and we would like to catch and chase bad guys and protect our citizens. And work with our community to make it a safe place. Animal control was not on my list of things that I really wanted to manage. Um, it is something that we saw the need in two thousand nineteen. So initially, so.
Stay close to the mic, thank you, thank you.
When I took over as chief, uh, we contracted with IHS, I believe it was somewhere around thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Uh, we, I initiated that contract, it went through, within three years, it raised a. We got numbers that raised over a hundred and four hundred and five thousand. Uh, that was concerning, it went at three hundred percent, three years, we could not keep that trend. Uh, we also had some concerns with some of the services that we were getting at that point in time. Uh, our officers routinely respond to calls for service. We're gonna be the first on scene for any vicious animal, we're gonna be the first on scene for, or actually, we come across, we make some arrests. We end up tail, taking uh dogs into our custody. And we would have to wait sometimes upwards of two, maybe three hours in the field, we don't have the personnel to do that. Um, so that ki, kinda created a little bit of an issue on service levels. We were getting reports of three hundred, almost four hundred calls for service on animal controls. Calls, we never experienced anything like that when we were in the animal control business. So what I couldn't do is argue calls for service, and I could not argue the amount of uh the dogs that they were picking up. Um, they were reporting anywhere from two hundred and twenty-two dogs, a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty-two dogs, I think it's the report we had in the two years of service. Seemed high, we couldn't, we couldn't dispute that. I can tell you that we average between seventy and a hundred and six dogs is what we picked up over the last two years. Um, so that tells you a little bit of discrepancies in the numbers that we received from them, that's almost uh two and three times. The numbers they were reporting, so not saying they weren't being honest, what I'm saying is our numbers are a little bit different than theirs. With that being said, I put together a presentation of just an idea of what we do during a year on animal control. Uh, last year, we picked up seventy-three dogs, uh, we rehomed fifty of them. Uh. I'm sorry, we, we returned fifty to the owners, we rehomed twenty-one of them, and we euthanized two. Uh, the two that were euthanized, uh, we take that very serious, I have to sign off on those. Um, no one else in, in our department's allowed to sign off on that. And one of them was injured so bad in an accident, just couldn't be repaired, and one was just, it was a, a dog that bit some people. And he was very vicious, we had our vet, uh, veterinarians look at him, we had a Homeward Bound look at him, and we just couldn't. In good, good conscience, we could not rehome that dog. So we put that dog down, you can see that number's very low though, too. We take that very serious, uh, what happened when we took animal control back over, I reached out to. IHS and I asked them for a hybrid contract. Um, it used to be years ago, when we ran our own animal control business, we could take our dogs up. Uh, we'd hold them for five days, which is required by state law. Uh, if they're not picked up by the owner, we would take them to IHS, drop them off, and I believe it was twenty-five or fifty dollars, I don't. I'm not sure which number it was, it's one of those two numbers, and they would either rehome the dog or take care of that dog, whatever they would do. Um, the things they do very well, they provide a great veterinarian service, we, the, second to none, um. We, we don't provide that type of service, we do have contracts with our local vets, twenty-four hour. The animal control, uh, Westbat, I'm sorry, they have actually done, treated the city very well. Um, they help us with uh our animals, and they don't charge us very much money to do that. We have, I reached out to Homeward Bound and spoke to them, because they do a really good job caring for animals. That's the business they're in, they treat us really well, um, that's the contract we're here to discuss tonight, um, they haven't raised it too much over the years. I think, I'm not sure what tonight's contract is, I think it was five percent more than last year's. Um, and they rehome all of our dogs, and they take it very serious and they take very good care of them. So I think it's really important, I've, I've read some comments about what people think of Homeward Bound, and. I understand the frustrations, why I could tell you is they treated us very well, they've treated the city very well, and they take really good care of our animals. And I don't have a bad thing to say about anything that they've done. So I, Ms. Mayor and council, I stand for any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Chief, can you tell me a little bit about the um, conditions of the. Facility where the, uh, where the dogs are um kennelled or when they're in care of Homeward Bound? What's that, what's that look like for the animal?
So what we do is we hang, we keep the dog for five days. Um, we've made agreements, so sometimes we'll hold it a little bit longer, depending on whether we can get it into uh veterinarian services. So after the five days, we turn it over to Homeward Bound, uh, before the dogs.
Uh, Chief, and can you maybe back up just a bit, what's the conditions like, while, while?
The conditions of our kennel?
Of, of your kennel before it goes, and then, and then, okay, just maybe walk me through the, um, what an animal might expect that's picked up.
Well, it's a, it, it's an animal control facility, so there's uh between four and six cages in there at any given time. Um, we have four permanent cages in there, they have a divider, which we can open, allow them to go outside when weather permits. Um, we, there's heating, there's cooling inside, um, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it's a clean, and it's a nice facility.
Thank you. And, and then when they go to. And, and then when they go to Homeward Bound, what does that look like?
It's actually a nicer facility. That's a business. What they do is, that's their business. Homeward Bound is connected to the dog park. The dog park houses dogs. Sometimes they, people board their dogs there. Sometimes they just drop them off for daycare. They spend anywhere from eight to twelve hours in the daycare and any given day if they're not being boarded. It's like, that is the, probably the Taj Mahal. They have swimming pools, they have they have slides, they have all kinds of jungle gyms that they get to play on. We don't have all that stuff, but it's a, it's a very nice facility.
Any other questions, Chief?
Mayor?
Yes?
Chief, can you go into the service level agreements a little bit more? Just so I understand. So the IHS, one of the issues was, it was just take them a while to come down to the city and, and pick up dog and you'd have to wait versus our officers could just take them to the kennel. And so what was, is that, what was kind of the general amount of time it took them to respond versus what we could do independently with the, with the city managing?
Mr. Mayor and Council, it depended on the time of day. So on any given day, for instance, if we were out tonight, it would take them a lot more time to respond because they don't have people on. So if they do respond, they have to, they have to come out from a call out, especially at two, three in the morning. They're not like police where they have patrols out twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five. So it kind of depends on the day, it depends on the traffic, depends on the number of animal control officers they have out, and depends on the locations of those animal control officers. So when I say it could take up to two, three hours, it very well could. Right now, if we were to pick up an animal on, say, on an arrest, we could have that animal dropped off at the kennel in fifteen minutes. We'd make notes and the animal control officer at Homeward Bound take care of it the next day.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? I'm taking it from your comments that you, your recommendation would be to renew the contract.
Hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay. My way of information for the audience, there's a ministerial component to this renewal in that during the public hearing process for the budget that took place in August. It was, this was presented and contemplated. It actually was budgeted to go into effect October first, which is the first day of our fiscal year. City's fiscal year is October one through September thirty. So we've been operating on the last year's contract for this couple of months, just because of some timing issues to get it on the agenda. So with that, Council, oh, if you have no further questions, I will turn it to you for any deliberation you want to do or any action you want to take.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure, so I think there's a conception that it's a contract ready to go with IHS. There's not. We, we haven't engaged, we haven't negotiated with them. There's nothing to even present or sign or do whatever. So a lot of feedback I think we've gotten is we want you to sign with IHS. There's nothing in paper, in writing, presented to the city with castrated and rusted look at from them. It would be something, if we're interested in that, it would be more progress for the twenty twenty four budget.
Certainly should, should have some discussion and we'll get into a little bit of that when we start talking about the cats and and I'm anticipating that there may be some sidebars. I mentioned Heidi a while ago. She is an advocate for cats, which I'm sure she will explain and works with multiple jurisdictions. I think has some familiarity with with who's doing what and how they're doing it. And what resources might, might not be available. And, you know, I don't even know exactly what the discussion might end up being, but I'm willing to certainly have it. Okay. So what's the pleasure, Council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution eleven thirty-five twenty-two to approve the Homeward Bound contract for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three in Garden City and, and Homeward Bound.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Here now the percolal.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Now, Heidi, I'd like to invite you up when you're ready.
Okay, we can do that.
Since she's got the PowerPoint, we're going to have her testify from there. Those that follow can use the podium in the center. She's going to need to, to advance the slides as she's ready. So if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Yes. Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Heidi Swanson. I live Can you hear me better? My name is Heidi Swanson. I live at four, four, five, six North Yoracan Way in Boise. I'm right on the border between Boise and Garden City. I'm right off of State Street. Thank you so much for your time tonight. And I know that there's a lot of kind of different sides of this. So hopefully we can piece together some strategies to go forward. So as Mayor Evans said, I am a cat advocate. I'm actually an animal advocate. I've been an animalful, animal advocacy. It's a tongue twister for over ten years. When I moved here about three years ago, I saw the need in my adjoining community. I was pretty shocked that there wasn't an animal control solution for cats. And so I, I started getting involved and learning more about what that was about. So I've really been over the last three years, a resource within the community. I volunteer with a lot of different cat organizations. I've been working a lot with Donna and her team on what's going on in Garden City. I work with a different private cat rescue that we get lots of calls from people across the Treasure Valley looking for resources on the situations at hand. And so I'm on the phone a lot with them, kind of guiding them to what's available to them. A lot of us are also on a lot of different pages for social media. And people are always asking, here's a situation I have, what can I do? And so I'm on social media a lot, trying to guide people on what, what is available for them in their communities. I'm also a cat mom myself to three indoor cats. They're not free roaming, but they're indoor cats and they're my babies as well. So I know one of the things we talked about is a, a goal and a hope that there would be a possibility to amend the twenty twenty-three budget with the goal of having a comprehensive animal control solution. I hear what you're saying in terms of your guys' fiscal year responsibilities and your upcoming contract. But I'm happy to hear that you're open to what can we do for the other animals in Garden City despite needing to move forward with Homeward Bound on your existing proposal. And so our big ask tonight was to kind of walk through and talk about how can we update the animal code to include all animals, not just dogs. How do we amend or find a different solution, budget solution for a more comprehensive animal control? And how do we partner with, with people that know these systems like Idaho Humane Society that is providing priceless services to all other Ada County residents for a comprehensive animal control? So when you go to, I don't know if you guys have been to the Idaho Humane Society Dorman location. It's their animal control location. I did a project this summer that I'll talk about. And when you walk up to their door, this is a sign on their door saying unfortunately, we cannot accept stray animals from outside of Ada County or Garden City. So these are a lot of the calls that I get when I'm volunteering at the private cat rescue. And I know a lot of people in the audience here tonight are part of that too. They're, they get a lot of requests on I'm a Garden City resident, what do I do? I don't have access to Idaho Humane Society. So if I have, and let's just talk about all animals. I have a lost or a found or an abandoned animal at hand. What do I do with it? I don't have a central location to go to other than dogs. I can go to the police department or contact the police department for dogs, but anything else, cats, chickens, goats, you name it. There's no place for me to go. There's a lot of people right now and it's pretty heart wrenching, that call that are being displaced from their housing. You guys see it in your community of all the development that's going on. There are so many people that are being displaced from their houses. They're having financial hardships with the economy. Or they have a family member that's passed away and they're responsible for rehoming this animal and they themselves need to rehome their animals. What do they do? You know, they can't go to the police department and say, here, I don't even think they can do that for rehome dogs. That I don't know for sure. I know that they handle strays, but I don't know the rehoming aspect of it even for dogs. But let's call it cats or any other animals. What do they do? It's illegal to dump animals. It happens unfortunately, but if you don't have a resource to go to other than private rescues, which cost money. So an animal intake at a private rescue, if they have space, is at least seventy-five dollars. And so many people just don't have that available to them. And it, it's illegal for them to dump the animals. So what do they do? There's so many animals that they come across that are strays. Kitten litters unfortunately are endless. Eighty percent of kittens are born out, outside to no fault of their own, just because not everyone fixes their animals. So when residents come across kitten litters or lost animals or abandoned animals, what do they do? Are they supposed to turn a blind eye and just say, oh, I can't afford to help you and I don't have a resource to go to? And that ties into the population control for spay and neuter. So there's so many people out there that see animals in need, that need to be trapped, fixed, if they're abandoned and they weren't fixed. But if they don't have the money to go to a private vet or some of these low-cost spay and neuter clinics, these animals are going to continue to populate. And I know that on the website, it states that volunteers do this for Garden City, but time and financial resources are limited for people that are trying to help. So it's not a comprehensive solution. It's great that people have an option to go to the police department to report animal cruelty for dogs. But it's happening across the board for all animals. So who handles that? Or injured or deceased, all the time we see on social media. Unfortunately, there's this dead cat here. But they don't have anyone to call to pick up that animal or to log that animal as a DOA or to scan that animal to see if a family member is looking for that animal. And then we touched on this about the hardships that some residents are encountering. A lot of people want to do right by their animals, but they don't have the financial means. And so they're looking for food. And again, the community comes together to try to help these people out so they can keep their animals and give them food. But we don't have a centralized pet food bank to point them to. So this is on, this is the two thousand twenty-one IHS annual report. So these, these stats were pulled from there. And I think the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the services that are offered to all other Ada County residents and animals in those cities. I know there's been a lot of talk about costs and about contract prices. But I think we all know, all of our cities are growing, our human population of our cities are growing. Animal, the ownership of animals in households continues to increase. And so it makes sense that as we're increasing services, prices are going to increase as well. So again, top, top numbers, over nine thousand animals that were stray or owner surrenders came into Idaho Humane Society in twenty twenty-one. Fifteen hundred were reunited, thankfully. Of the animals that came in, sixty-eight hundred went through their adoption process. And the big number for us that we, we all live and breathe every single day is about spay and neutering. Ten thousand animals were able to get spayed and neutered. And we'll talk more about that with the community cat program that's available for Ada County residents. We talked about those kittens that we all find and don't have a solution for. But Idaho Humane had about seventeen hundred animals come through their foster program, which turns into vetting, spay and neutering and adoption throughout the Treasure Valley. Unfortunately, twelve hundred animal cruelty calls came into Idaho Humane that they were to address. And I, I'm sure it wasn't just dogs. It was probably all animals that fell under that. And then they were able to provide thirty thousand pounds of food to people in need for their animals. I'm going to skip this one because we're going to talk a little bit more about it. It's a little bit more about lost and found. But we kind of touched on it before. You can basically bring in any stray animal seven days a week to the Idaho Humane Dorman location from eight to six. So we, I get calls all the time about, you know, they found a stray cat or a stray dog. What do I do? And they're able to do that Monday through Sunday, eight to six. So on your website, and there's been a lot of talk about Garden City's definition of cats and why they're not regulated. There, your term for them is free roaming. However, in, and maybe you guys can explain, it's confusing because in the city's codes, the stray code and the impoundment code, cats are still part of that code. So if I go to look up your code, it actually says cats in the code. So that's, that's confusing. It also states, as I had mentioned before, your website, that spay and neuter is only handled by volunteers within the community. Again, all of us only have a limited amount of time and resources to be able to tackle that. And we'll see a visual of how fast cat populations explode and it just can't be done by volunteers. So some of the things to reiterate, and we've talked a little bit about this, is what, what do Garden City residents do when they've been displaced from their home or they need to rehome another family member's animals due to death? They don't have a place to go. They only have, they could do social media, try to rehome their animals that way, but they don't have a centralized location to rehome or relinquish. And they can't abandon because it's illegal. It's illegal in the state code. You know, you can't abandon animals. So what do they do? All of us here and find ourselves stray litter of kittens. It's not because they wanted to be born outside. It's because someone chose not to fix their animal and a kitten litter happened and we come upon them. Well, we don't want to just have them sit there and suffering and become roaming cats. We want to be able to get them into a foster program that can vet them because an example I'll tell you about in a couple of slides is they're always sick. They always have upper respiratory or fleas or mites or whatever the case is. So they don't have a way to get them into foster, vetting, spay and neutering and adoption. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't know this, but kittens start reproducing at four months of age. They go into heat at four months of age. So a litter of kittens with their, their brother and sister, someone on the phone said they do that. And I'm like, yes, they're animals. They mate with themselves. They will start reproducing at four months of age. So it, they multiply very fast. So cat numbers will continue to increase and their need for animal control and welfare is just like dogs. So here's the visual I had mentioned. We really feel that without a true comprehensive animal control solution with spay and neuter, Garden City is actually creating a cat populate, overpopulation problem. An example I'm going to give you, what this, what this visual shows is that two unfixed, a male and a female, that's their reproduction trend. So this summer, I, I saw a needed in our neighborhood and there I trapped and trapped nine cats. So there was two mama cats and seven kittens. And out of those nine, seven of them were females. And if I didn't have Idaho Humane Society's resources to bring them in through the community cat program, based on quick math, that would have been at least a thousand dollar project. Now, most people can't do that. They can't say, okay, I'm going to get these cats vetted and I'm going to get them fixed and I'm going to get them adopted out. So they would have had to leave those nine cats there. Three months later, there wouldn't be forty cats in that backyard, one backyard. Because someone didn't fix those cats. And so you can imagine that's happening all over in your communities for cat, for litters of kittens that people don't have the financial means to say, hey, I'm going to take this on. It wasn't my litter. You know, I found it in my shed. That's commonly where they're found, under my shed. And I don't have the financial resources, so I'm going to have to leave them and they're just going to continue to multiply and create this overpopulation problem. A little bit more about the community cat program, and I'm not clear, and maybe you guys can clear things up for me. If this was in place when you contracted with IHS, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you guys have always just done dog contracts. However, a key element, a key component of a cat service within Idaho Humane Society is their community cat program. And this is part of a nationwide Is their community cat program. And this is part of a, a nationwide trend. Um, our society is becoming more and more elevated in terms of what animals need for animal welfare. And so shelters have had to kind of pivot and, um, adjust to more of a no kill. Uh, shelter situation. And what that means is in the past. When feral cats would come into a shelter or neonatal kittens, which means they're under eight weeks. Um, and they rely on their mom, those would be euthanized in the past. And so as society has said, we need to do better by our animals. Most shelters have created no kill. And what that means is they create programs like the community cat program. For citizens like us to be able to bring cats and not be fearful that they're going to be euthanized. And so if someone brings in a stray cat that's friendly and it's not fixed, they'll fix it and they'll put it through their adoption program. For me, I brought in two feral mama cats. They never knew humans. And so what they did was they fixed the mamas and returned them to field. I. I see them with my own eyes in my neighborhood. I know that they've been fixed, their ear has been tipped and they're not reproducing anymore in that community. So as an Ada County resident, you can bring in three strays a week. So what that means, like with my project, um, it counts, a litter of kittens under four months counts as one. So between myself and my neighbor, we were able to bring in the two mamas and all seven kittens within two weeks. To get them all fixed and into foster care. Um, and that's just a priceless resource for all of Ada County residents. So the calls that I get in all the time. People will say, hey, I, I, this is my situation. I found a litter of kittens or I found this stray cat. What do I do? And what I ask them is what county do you live in? Cause I need to know if they live in Ada or Canyon to direct them to the right resource. If they say Ada County. I ask them what city. And unfortunately, if they say Garden City, I can't direct them to this priceless resource. And what I have to tell them is that unfortunately, Garden City isn't contracted with Idaho Humane Society. So your only solutions for the, this litter of kittens or this stray cat. Is to pay a private, um, shelter like a simply cats, like a Happy Jacks. For an intake to take them into their program. However, that's at least seventy five dollars for an adult. A hundred and fifty dollars for a kitten litter and peop-. Most people say I don't have that type of disposable income. And so they're left without a resource. And another challenge is those private. Rescues right now, just based with the climate of things right now, everyone's at capacity. So. They're turned away anyway, even if they would say I can spend the seventy five or the hundred and fifty dollars. They're at capacity because there's not enough adoption. So what do they do? They don't have the resource of Idaho Humane that says, come, bring me three a week. That's not an option for them. So I think we've touched a little bit about why it's probably, um, reasonable why the contract prices have changed over the years. Just as you guys are evolving your city, you're changing your codes, you're changing your development, your city is, has probably drastically changed from where it was. Um, that's how animal services are changing too. And we've talked about, it seems that you guys have only kind of touched on the dog element for animal control in Garden City. However, Idaho Humane is offering a comprehensive program. Um, like we said, even for the dog element, that's ha- helping strays and rehoming strays. But what do your residents do if they need to rehome their animal? Their dog. Is that even an option for them? So it makes sense based on just the elevated, um, need within society of having higher animal control, um, standards. Um, servicing more and more animals with more and more people adopting animals, more animals per household. Our cities' populations are growing, so it makes sense that they're servicing a lot more animals. And the, the big element of transitioning from. The times when we would have to euthanize feral cats and neonatal kittens to now being able to service them. Through spay and neuter programs. So they're servicing a lot more animals that way. Um. So I think in, in general, we just want to show that it makes sense. Times change, processes change, just because Garden City has done animal control one way for certain amount of time, doesn't mean that it's effective. For today and where your city is going. And so we ask that you take that into consideration in evolving, um, into more of a comprehensive animal control and welfare solution. So in summary, just as I touched on, we know that there's a lot of things in flux right now. We know that you're in a position where you're. Approving the Homeward Bound, um, and police, uh, solution for dogs. And me personally, it was never an attack on what the police department is doing and what Homeward Bound is doing. It's more of this is not addressing complete animal control and welfare for animals. Um, you look at Idaho Code, um, and it cl- clearly states that you need to provide shelter, food and services for animals. And so. Are we putting residents in a position where they can't even? Be in line with what Idaho Code is for animal cruelty and animal welfare? Um. And so I hope with all this information, um, and possibly, uh, working together that. We can figure out how do we make animal control, um, code. Inclusive of all animals, especially cats. Cats are not, I think one thing that I forgot to mention, the, the free roaming, you know, cats are not. Just free roaming. They're indoor cats. People love them, spend money on them. If they accidentally get out, they need a way to be able to find them. Um, kittens aren't, they don't ask to be born outside, these eighty percent of kittens. So they need a solution. Um, they, they don't want to be free roaming cats. So update the animal control code. Find a way, I was in corporate America for seventeen, eighteen years and our budgets always were revised. We never had one budget that never was touched. So I do believe that budgets are meant to be amended. And so. With you having to go forward with the Homeward Bound, hopefully you can find a way to address. The cat population and need within Garden City, um, through a different method in budgeting. And I know, uh, Council Jacob said that. And Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned that there isn't a contract right now at hand with Idaho Humane. But I hope that through this discussion and figuring out how to. Find a comprehensive animal control solution and spay and neuter solution. For all the other animals in Garden City, that that could be a possibility, um, to partner with them in twenty twenty three to service all animals. So in summary, Garden City residents, pets and animals need the same elevated and comprehensive animal control and welfare solution that all other eighty county residents have access to. Thank you and I stand for questions.
Great, thank you. Um. Wanted to address just a couple of things with you, um. The, we dealt with the Homeward Bound. Contract as we explained earlier. Uh. The update to our animal control code. Uh. Has had already begun. So. We're doing a. Fairly comprehensive review of a number of our codes and the animal code is one. We don't have anything to share with you at the moment. Uh, but I've read a couple of, uh, uh, one very specific memo from one of our legal interns regarding that. So. So that's kind of underway. Um. The, uh. Budget amendment, uh, you're correct, uh, there's a process to amend the budget. Uh. The. Um, when the, when the budget is set. Uh, it's set on the cost of services, uh, in relation to the revenue that's available. It's a zero. Base budget, balanced budget. So, uh, budgets can be amended if you want to add. Uh, a service, in this case, uh, uh, service to cats. Uh, then one of two things has to occur. Uh, you have to identify an additional revenue source. Uh, or you. Go back through and decide, uh, other areas of service that you've authorized that need to be reduced. So that's, that's a process issue. So, uh. Um. And then, uh. We, we discussed the, the Humane Society, uh, partnership. Uh, would be interesting, uh. To have a. Uh. A discussion, um. In fact, I'm, as I'm sitting here thinking out loud, um. And this is something Heidi, maybe we can discuss a little further offline. Uh, but I'm. Uh, I want to talk, uh, to the county. Ada County. Uh, about. Some aspects, uh, of their contract. Uh, because they are funded by. All Ada County residents through the property tax. So Garden City residents are paying a portion of the. Revenue that they use to contract with the Humane Society. And typically, uh, services the county provides are either. Unique to the county, to the benefit of all. The example that would be the court system. Uh, cities don't have courts and I don't have anything to do with courts. There's no enhanced service the city provides in the court system. The court systems provide everybody in the county. Uh, a different example would be, uh, like the sheriff's department. We get a base service through our county taxes for access to the sheriff's department. And we enhance that. By. Funding a police department within the city. So an example, when we have a serious traffic accident. Uh, the sheriff's department's traffic reconstruction team will come down. Uh, as a service, uh, to our police department. Uh, but they don't answer regular calls for service. We have funded a police department to. Fulfill that enhanced service level for our residents. So there's a discussion to be had, uh, on a base service level that we should expect, uh, with the taxes we pay to the county. Uh, and I don't know what that might look like in the context of the, uh, Humane Society contract, but, uh. And, uh. I, I'd mentioned this to others and to staff, but now that the election's over, I know who the county commissioners are going to be. Uh. I, I know the chairman, well, that's the discussion I intend to have. So that's, that's a, you know, for what it's worth column. Um. I found it, uh. Uh, I, I, I am interested in the community cats. Program, learn a little more about that. I, I found it interesting that, uh, on the sign going into the Humane Society, the city of Star isn't mentioned. They don't contract with I H S. So, uh, perhaps, uh. Their residents are able to drop cats off.
I know the sign says unincorporated is star unincorporated.
Stars and incorporated city, it's, uh. Well, it's actually larger than Garden City now. Uh, they're about fifteen thousand people. Um. So, uh. That, that's. That's an area I really want to explore because, uh. Garden City residents pay a lot of property tax to the Ada County. And that property tax, uh. Should accrue to some benefit to the city residents of Garden City for every function that the county performs. Whether it's the landfill. Whether it's the sheriff's department, whether it's, uh, the court system, whether it's, uh. Uh. You know, uh, the censors office, whatever it is, uh, there's. Nine separately elected officials in the county and all county residents. Both un- in unincorporated and incorporated pay the same. County tax. Uh. So that's an area I really want to, want to explore and, uh. We, we can discuss that further, uh. And I think just as a matter of. Interest, I think it'd be interesting to know why the city of Star isn't on the sign if, if they're able to. Drop cats off. Uh, you, I'll get to you in just a minute. I got to keep kind of an order here and we'll finish with Heidi. Um. Then, uh, uh, let's see. Um. Does the community cats project, is there a specific? Cost for the spay neuter component that is broken out or is it just kind of a general service or do you know?
So Mr. Mayor, I think it's part of each city's contract with Idaho Humane Society. It's, it's inclusive. Um. There could be a side price for that. I'm not sure, but for a resident, you're just able to drop off no price, no cost to you.
Uh, uh, another reason it made me think about the county discussion I just had is, uh, I didn't see any language. In the Boise contract or the Meridian contract that I studied. That mentioned anything about funding, spay, neutering, returning, anything that you mentioned in the community cats projects, not in the contract. Uh, so if that's, if that's occurring. Uh, then it's outside the contract and. And so that's just another area I, I want to explore. I didn't have an opportunity to, to, uh, review. Uh, Eagles contract, although, uh, Mayor Pierce told me that it did not include cats. So I don't know how that's working in Eagle. So. So, so they're, okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Donna. Uh, so. Um, again, these are just things that kind of come into mind, uh, that have been. Uh, generated by your, by your presentation, which I very much appreciate.
Thank you.
Um. Let's see, um. And then, uh. Uh, council, are there any specific questions on the materials that were presented? Uh.
I have questions for Heidi, but she's not in a particular interest.
Oh, well. Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation, um. First year on the council, so this is a new topic for me. I first got exposed to it when I actually knocked on Donna's door when I was campaigning. She was kind enough to walk me through her garage and, um, showing her operation. So. And I, and what you do is great, Donna, and I'm supporter of the community cats. The question I have is I'm, I'm. I'm trying to wrap my head around the feral cat issue. So, cause when I talked to residents, a lot of it was, boy, we have a lot of feral cats, right? And, and what are we doing about that? And then in this presentation, it's, it seems like the I H S contract, they're not trapping. They're not coming down and getting rid of feral cats themselves and doing that. It's really, the I H S contract was, um, just, correct me if I'm wrong, was more of. It gives us the right to take animals to them for them to take care of, but it doesn't solve necessarily. The feral cat problem because if. Yeah, that would require a lot of volunteers, which again are limited on time and all that. To go through a massive trapping program to get all the feral cats off, off the. The street and, and take them to I H S because we would now have that privilege to do that. So. I guess I don't see how the feral cat problem gets solved. Right? So we stay and we put them back on there. Then I guess theoretically, if you spay every cat and neuter every cat eventually it would. Decrease. And so, yeah, so I just, I, I can't, in my mind, I was like, the I H S contract just gives us the right to take pets there. But it doesn't do anything else about. Getting the feral cat and that's where the community cat.
I'm bringing you up next.
Yeah, so I, I, I. So the real benefit of the I H S is just, well, it gives residents the rights to take pets there. Other than that. What, what, it doesn't solve our problem, Garden City, the feral cats or educate me on that.
Sure, um, Council Jacob, so feral cats will never go away. Um, there's just not enough education out in our communities for spay and neuter. Um, people don't understand, they start reproducing at four months of, of age. Uh, people will adopt or get free cats on Craigslist and they'll be like, oh, I'm going to let them, you know, play outside. Well, then they start mating. And have litters that maybe that family doesn't even know that litter is somewhere, um, outside. So feral. Feral cats aren't going to go away. It's all about managing and, and preventing them. Um, and so for Ada County residents to be able to, there are a lot of people out there trapping. Um, to try to control the population because they don't want more and more feral cats. Yeah, so, so Donna will explain the resources that she helps people educating. Um, a lot of us educate within the community on where you can get traps, how the process is, where you can take them. And again, it's all about spay and neutering and letting those cats live out their life, what they're used to. And you wouldn't believe in the cats you trap. You always get friendlies because unfortunately, they've either been dumped by your neighbor who doesn't want them. Going to the bathroom in their garden and has dumped them somewhere else. And they're a friendly cat and they end up getting trapped by. Someone that's trying to spay and neuter or all these kittens that you find that, um, you know, if you don't get them soon enough, they're going to. Become feral because they don't have exposure to humans and, until you get them to get into a spay and neuter program. So. Regardless if I, I H S was going out and trapping for the community, which they don't, um. If, if people like us don't have the system to bring these cats in to get spayed and neutered. The feral cat population is just going to continue to be out of hand. So.
Correlation.
Yeah.
And there's, and. I'm assuming you work very closely with I H S. Are you aware of them contemplating a hybrid program? Cause the whole brown program really works for us. On the dog side, it'd be great to be able to maybe have it be your service where it gives us that right. If, you know, maybe pay for that as well as not necessarily. Include the, the dog aspect of it. Do they do that with anybody or are they even open to that as of your aware?
So Council Jacobs, I want to make sure it's clear, like I don't have a direct relationship. So Council Jacobs, I want to make sure it's clear, like I don't have a direct relationship with IHS other than using their services. So I've primarily been on the private cat rescue side, but this summer, because I had this large litter and two mamas that I needed help with, I worked with IHS and learned, learned even more about the value there. Because I, it really made me understand all these calls that I get for people looking for resources, what they're going through. And for the ones that have those, access to those, that they can, they can have a solution for these, these situations versus Garden City residents that don't have access to those resources.
Hopefully, we can get them in front of us and ask those questions. Alright, thank you.
Great. Other questions of Heidi?
Sure. Thank you, Miss Swanson, for your time. I, I enjoyed the presentation that you prepared. I can tell that you put time and effort in it. And I found, I found it informative. I, I had a couple of questions that have already been asked of, by my colleagues, so I won't burden your time. I, I did have a, just a question. You, you mentioned the tipped ear and I've seen the cats with those notches, I guess, what, how I would characterize that. Does that, does that hurt the cat? I've always kind of wondered.
Sure. So Council Page, thank you so much for your feedback. And I want you to know that it was a collective effort from all of the cat advocates to really communicate the need out in the community that we all see and live and breathe. There's so many people that have compassion fatigue because it's just so overwhelming when we don't have collective resources to address what's going on in the community. So thank you for that feedback. So the good news is on the notched ear, they only do that under anesthesia when they're doing spay and neuter. So it's a very humane process and the reason they do it is for rescuers like us that we're not retrapping those cats and bringing those cats back. So we can clearly see, okay, this cat has been spayed or neutered and they're able to stay in there where they're living.
Thank you. I, I did appreciate the, the answer to that. And I want to acknowledge that I, I understand you're not a spokesperson for IHS or affiliated in any way and some of my frustration as a council member has come. Frankly, I, I think from a, a lack of understanding some members of the community when I was campaigning and knocking doors that would be very aggressive about about a cat problem in our city. In some neighborhoods in our city, the, the problem is much more evident than in other neighborhoods. And can you speak a little bit to that? What's that? What causes that phenomenon?
So Council Page, you're saying, why is it worse in some areas than others?
Yes.
So education is a big component and I think there's some individuals here that will speak on different communities. Especially, you know, Donna and some individuals that work with her on, on why it's more prevalent in certain areas, but education is one, like I said, a lot of people don't know that cats start reproducing at four months of age. And financially, some people may never even consider spay neuter. And so I think it's just a, a matter of education. Some areas may be more informed on, on cat population and, and breeding than others and it could be the level of care, caring. You know, some, some people may have more, they may see cats as more of a domestic animal, one that should be cared for where others may just see it as rodent control and not have the appreciation for that life as much. But I know some other individuals are gonna talk about efforts, more focused efforts that need to be made in different, different communities than others. I know I was just recently at Operation Community Cats meeting that they help people within the community similar to Donna, where they provide traps and education on trapping and they provide feral, feral clinics, spay and neuters, those types of things. And they were talking about in certain communities such as mobile home parks and apartment communities, how do they create some type of educational packet and outreach to managers to try to set up policies and procedures for your residents. Your residents are required to have spayed and neutered animals or if there is feral cats, what is the process on getting them all fixed and spayed and neutered to control that population? That's, you know, so it doesn't continue to grow. Hope that helps.
Yeah, it, that it does. Thank you so much. I you know, I, I, again, I hesitate to, to rail on people who aren't here, but you know, of, of this. When I'm campaigning and knocking on doors, you know, IHS, 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 I keep getting that thrown at me and it's, it's frustrating. To not be able to educate people insofar as, you know, the dramatic price increase and that our city was you know, offered the, the contract offering to us was per capita so much more expensive than our sister cities. And so I have a hard time understanding the parity problem with the contract that was offered. And, you know, and I realize that if you're not a spokesperson for IHS, but it's, it just goes to my, my frustration as policymakers were voted to solve problems. And I've heard testimony again and again, not only from you, but from my conversations with Donna, that this is, you know, this is not a problem that's solved. It's a problem that's improved.
And managed.
And, and that's, that's also frustrating, right? You're, we're always gonna have cats that need to be home. And so that doesn't mean we throw our hands in the air and do nothing. I've been fortunate to, to be able to contribute to the Community Cat Project. Financially, unfortunately, we can't home cats. I have an allergic child, but you know, it's, I'm, I'm very compassionate to the cause. I, I just don't know how as policymaker we can solve for some of these problems financially.
And Council Page, I appreciate that. I think one way to look at it is when you don't have a spay and neuter solution, you're creating financial problems for the city. Because it's not gonna go away and it's gonna continue to grow and be exacerbated and it's gonna cost more in the long run. And so like you said, just having your hands in the air and saying, we don't have a solution for cats, it is going to create more and more problems year over year. Because like you said, in some communities, it's visually, you're there, you see it. You know, cats are so good at hiding, but there are some communities that there's so many. But if you're not giving those residents any, any solutions for them to bring a cat to get spayed or neutered and they don't have the finances, it's going to stay that way and it's gonna grow. So I think looking at the cost of services versus what the long-term impact would be financially is definitely something that should be looked at.
Thank you for answering my, my questions on this once and I appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have anything?
I, I don't. I just want to thank you for, it's very polished presentation and detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Heller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Donna Brown.
All right. I'm Donna Brown, forty-seven eighty River Cove Place. Mayor Evans and members of the council. Garden City has a very unique situation. Let me start by saying that I think communication with Idaho Humane Society would be the first place we want to start. I think we need to talk to Mr. Rosenthal specifically and have a conversation going on. I do not think that he is in a position to give us special treatment. He has, my understanding of the way this happened went down three years ago, it was. I think it's probably because of the new concept of no kill. And the new concept of the society being more sophisticated in their appreciation of their animals. And the new beautiful facility, the new start, state-of-the-art facility that they needed to build because their other building was, was horribly old and so they had these big expenses that they needed to cover just to take care of all of the expansion in the area. And the new quality of life that they were, that our society was demanding. So this is what Mr. Rosenthal decided to do, if I understand this right. He had an amount that he had to, he had a budget he had to meet. So he gave the cities that number and said, I need you to decide what cities pay what. That was my understanding. And then there was a meeting and out of that meeting, they all went away with a figure. They came up with, the cities came up with. So at that point, many of the cities like Eagle would go out and say, we don't, we, we, we can figure out something, we can do it ourselves. So they had committees in place and they did a lot of research. And they found out that what they were offered by the Idaho Humane Society, they couldn't touch doing it themselves. So what, at this point, let me just say, this presentation at this point in time is really not about doing cats. It's about doing animals, all animals and all the services for all the animals. That's the medical, the vets, the, the rehoming, the network that they have available to all of our citizens all over the county that this beautiful network that you can get online and it updates every twenty minutes of all the new animals that they have in their facility, is this yours? And you can search by color, you can search by breed, by anything to find your cat. And the way it used to be with Idaho Humane Society is people knew where to take their cats. And people knew where to look for their cats. So everybody went to the same source to find those cats. So in this case, it's broken up. Many people don't know to go to see, to go to Garden City Police. They don't know about Homeward Bound. If you go to the Homeward Bound website, they haven't had a posting on there since twenty twenty. So, and personally, I believe they are not, they don't have networking capabilities to, to put the information out there for their society, for their, for our people. So everybody's at a loss where to look for their, their dogs. But not only that, I know personally, medical costs for a dog or a cat or a chicken is so expensive. If you go to a vet and you have your female cat fixed, it's can probably be up to a five hundred dollars. Now, we have done seven hundred or eight to eight hundred cats since I've been doing this. And can you imagine, these people cannot afford their own food. They cannot, most of the people that I'm dealing with on the east side are they don't have these cats. Let me just say, out of the seven hundred to eight hundred cats that we've done, if we had had the capability of Idaho Humane Society, I would say three hundred of those cats would have been able to be found their home or rehomed. That's three hundred cats off of our streets. But I only can, I only can return cats. I can return cats. So last week, I trapped seven cats and four of those cats, three of them kittens, were let off in the snowstorm. And so was the mom, the domestic cat who was wanting to me to just hug it. And I just let it go. Let it go into our streets and that's what I do all the time. So when you say you want a cat group or it's, it's not that. I you need to give all these all this wonderful ability to us, then we can really start to go. As far as these, as far as these Community Cat programs, what that does is give us, give the community a chance to be involved in their own rescue projects. And what Garden City Community Cats does, it's a kind of a new way of looking at of rescue is I find the caregivers. The caregivers are people who have colonies, ten cats, twenty cats, it keeps growing. And at that point, I go help them. I've got the traps, I've got the this, that, and I help them trap their cats. And then we take those cats and find places to spay and neuter at some price that we, through donations, can get fixed. But when I see my friends who are rescuers from the other parts of the county and they're up at Idaho Humane Society and they bring in cat after cat after cat, and Idaho Humane Society says, okay, we'll take them in, we'll give them, we'll fix them for free. We'll get them vaccinations for free. Oh, you've got a litter of kittens? We'll take the kittens. We'll get those rehomed. We'll get those fostered. I just sit there and go, oh my God, it's so overwhelming. I have, it's like, picture this, picture a huge dam. And I've got my finger in a hole in the dam and the cats are going over the dam. That's what I deal with every day and the emotional stress of me seeing those sick kittens and having to take them in and spend months trying to get them well, just to hopefully get some of them adopted. I'm a seventy-two-year-old woman. This is what you have planned for me for my retirement. You know, I, I, I can't tell you. When I go down into Garden City, I know those streets. I know those streets, every single trailer park. And there isn't just free roaming cats anymore. Believe me, there, the dogs are just trotting across streets, across lots. I see chickens, I see rabbits. They're just walking around, you know? And let me see, another thing I want to say that's really, really important. It isn't a question of people just letting their cats go spay without being spayed and neutered. This is the scenario. You go in to a trailer park. I knock on a door, somebody answers. There's cats everywhere. I said, looks like you need some cats trapped. And they say, yes. They said, the trailer next door had to move out because they couldn't afford the rent anymore, so they left. But they had ten cats that they just showed up on their door. These weren't their cats. And they were feeding those cats. And they were oftentimes feeding, I would find cans of food from the food bank open and the food was put on the ground with the cats instead of them eating it themselves. These were not the cats. So when they left, they didn't leave their cats. They left the cats that were left to them. Now, the next person took those cats was the cats they had and this, it went on and on and on. These people can't afford fifty dollars, much less five hundred. I trapped at a trailer park, right off of Adams, Alworth. We, a vet was kind enough to give us a clinic. We had twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five cats. We trapped those cats. I was just throwing those cats into traps. And we caught the twenty-five cats and of those twenty-five cats, eighteen were female cats. Okay, so then if you go back, I don't know. Arrow on the keyboard. Okay. Keyboard. Sorry. Alright, thanks. Um, so if we go back to this, that's what I want to show you. Eighteen female cats. Those eighteen would have had litters and the litters would have had, let's say, five is an easy number and I'll tell you what, here it says two point eight survived. In Garden City, lots of animals survive because people care about them. They're caring for them. They're sleeping under the trailers in the winter time. So you've got eighteen cats that each have, let's just say more like four cats live. And those of those, those female cats, four months they'll have kittens. And four months, those kittens will have kittens. Okay, so we've got exponentially, that's where we get, I'll just look at five years. Eleven thousand cats from one female cat. So when you say a volunteer group can do this for you without resources? Hmm, it can't happen. So any questions I can answer specifically? John, you had a question, I, I forgot.
Well, you, you answered it. It was about uh, uh, Eagle didn't have cats in their IHS contract and you said, could say.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, I just, yeah, no, we, 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 we can, we can explore that.
Yeah.
Uh, Donna, you're very effective at expressing your opinion just now. No, no, I'm not, I don't mean that as a child. I mean, it's uh, your passion is commendable. I know this is wearing you out. I know you've wanted to strangle me more than once, which I understand. Uh, uh, I think, uh, happy to hear from, from everyone that wants to speak. Uh, uh, but between Heidi and Donna, uh, I think we've been given a pretty succinct and compelling reason to take a look at this and try and figure something out. I've mentioned some, some things I can do. Uh, there's some, um, I don't know, Donna, if you know, or Heidi, you know about this, the SNIP program? Use it all the time?
Maybe stop six months, ten years.
Okay, okay. So uh, th- those kind of programs, we wanna, we wanna understand, but uh, uh, this uh, and again, brothers want to speak, let's go ahead and, and do that. And then I'll, I'll wrap it up. Thank you, uh, yes ma'am. Yeah, just come right here if you would and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Laura. I, I live in the city of nineteen forty. I, I have a slightly different perspective and I have some things to add to what both Donna and Heidi said. So I've been a Garden City resident for twenty years. I now have a facility down on Forty-Eighth Street, which is where I first met or who there was a cat problem. But I realized that it's really how it's healthy to put it out of the building and try to threaten to seal it. There's a problem, how to keep it in the neighborhood. Um, and I'm also a veterinarian. I've been at that for thirty years. I also work with emergency vet for more than fourteen years here in the city. I don't practice, I run a home hospital in this sort of town. I don't actively practice veterinary medicine. I'm, I'm, I'm in the industry in and out. And still that are skilled. So my first question, I have a little one here who recently spoke about the contact with Homeward Bound. And also how you're actually handling some of the injured animals that come in here. I know when I say we're the emergency vet, we're the knights. And we've got quite a few injured animals. Some are severely injured. A lot of them were obviously home. I mean, specifically remember, I'm not allowed to get shit in a bowl under the car. And then got brought in to emergency, you would feel numerous medical problems. And when I was working there, at that time, the weather, I had to have forty-four. I had to always show up and take the dogs from us and bring them to the supply. We had a budget to, to support them overnight. So if they didn't, we couldn't do this by owner. We would try to treat what shock was present. We tried to get their pain under control. And there was a budget that we would do if necessary to assure that animals could get better as quick as possible. But now it isn't a contract with the Humane Society. I'm a resident of it. And so I understand that when the animals come in. And I said they don't have a specific for that, but the worry that there isn't some sort of fund, the elbow, um, carefully found. And then I also worry about when they go to Homeward Bound. If they're not injured, if they are going to be identified. I'm actually foxes, they're all the way from that army who still work in the area. And then I've heard. I, I have no idea what you're saying, but if they're not expected to leave, I need to place now or let them in. With no social media set up to have these animals home, how are they going to be? And they all told me that in the mornings now, I mean, they're not facing ridiculous business when I work there. And since the COVID hit, the, the United States pet population has increased by six million. And the vet population has increased by about three million. I mean, it is just completely overwhelmed from feeling. So you're more now, so it's worse than it was. And there's a lot of the passion, the TV and problems. And so in the morning now, we have an injured dog, probably hasn't home. And there isn't anybody to transfer the dog to. And I understand the Humane Society will hate an injured dog that's on there, which is very nice of them. But West has to find the staff to transfer them over there themselves. And that often possible, I mean, he doesn't want to treat a short staff. And so now the dog has been there for a few more hours, or had it been identified. And it isn't worth getting them, the vet, they're giving you. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to be making the worst of it. There isn't any way, I'm just trying to sort of give you the overall picture of what happens. And then with the same ladder, I was talking about that had an orange hunting kitten, um, well-fed, hunting collar. The, the, there was a resident at the river's hotel, I believe, another guest. Just saw the dog, picked it up, brought it in, then it came in severely bit. He had multiple punctures on his hand, all over his arms, he was blood. It's no small thing to transfer an injured animal. And we really do have to have the knowledge of how to do that. Most people don't know that you shouldn't muzzle any animal that's injured before you try to pick it up or retrieve it. Most people are walking around with a muzzle, like, out of control. It's not good, we do it over a string and just effectively do that. But I remember, of course, I sent the guy who suggested we go to the doctor because bites to the hands are, can often cause infection, snaps, this law of use of your hand while the facility is even raw. And I just remember really thankful that it wasn't bit by that dog within the confines of my hospital. Because I don't know what the legal liabilities are for city and things like that. But there is a precedence in veterinary medicine. If an animal is bit, if an animal bites the owner, even if it's your own animal, under our care or in our facility, we're legal. So it kind of concerns me that our animal control officers who are trained in, in handling injured animals. And then, but definitely compared to my doctor, I'm confused about the question.
We, we have an arrangement with West Vet. We have an injured animal that's picked up twenty-four hours a day, regardless of when it is, we can take it to West Vet.
Yeah.
Okay, and uh, uh, we have an animal control officer uh, that, and our police officers in addition, know how to handle injured dogs and vicious dogs and pretty much every kind of dog. They've all got a lot of experience in that arena. Regarding the rehoming of them, regardless of what you see and, and your concerns about their network, they have a network and we know where all these dogs go. Uh, and we, as the chief said, out of seventy-some that we picked up in whatever period of time it was, two had to be euthanized because of, yeah, uh, fifty of them were returned to their owner. Uh, because we operate in a little over a four-square-mile area. If our animal control officer picks one up, has a collar or a chip that identifies it, he doesn't take it to the pound, he takes it home, drops it off if somebody's there to take it. So w- w- we have a, we have a very controlled program with dogs. I think, uh, I think uh, it's been illuminated tonight, uh, even more for the council, uh, that we have a different kind of a situation with, with cats. And we've got a course of action, I think, that we can at least initiate, that I've articulated about base services from the county. And uh, then a further discussion on some strategies on how to, how to, to either get the Humane Society to look at a drop-off, uh, community cats project scenario for Garden City rescuers. Uh, or some.
But in regards with the cats, I, I think I do have some thoughts and ideas. So it's not an overwhelming operation for all cats. And before I realized, when I first met Donna and Deborah, she's doing a maiden job, trying to get these animals spayed and neutered. But you're right, we have, we have a limited amount of land when you release them. And as the area becomes warmer and developed, there aren't going to be the people, the residents who are taking care of them. And there are a lot of creative solutions. And I actually think that Garden City is poised really well to, to make a really positive example for, for the feral cat situation. Because we are in this little isolated area. And it's one of the reasons why cats, staying here, they're stopped between the river and the bank and the two eighty-four and Ludbrook. And the other reason, I don't know historically, I mean, there's no historic in the cat city. And a lot of it is because of the transients that came through here. You have the, you have the racetrack, people who came in through the season, allowing the ban of the cats. And then you have the prisoners. So it's a part of the Garden City city in history and a part of the Garden City culture. And people are aware of this is the cat city. And you, you can really take something that is negative and use it to your advantage. It's a way to show that, that as a city, we're caring for these cats. And some of the other creative ideas that people have done, like in Hawaii, where the cat populations are desecating, some of the songbirds. The city stuffs have cat sanctuaries, their public cat sanctuary where cats are housed. And the public are caring for them. And then also there's the possibility of taking things like cats, which may, may continue to make it pretty hard to be known. Rather than take it other negatives, take it another path, or are they, they're always taking care of these cats? You can put cats, like five, um, categories, or one or two or three feral cats live. Particularly when it's, it's heroin. And you know, you, you just seem like the whole city is painting and advocating like they're going to do museums and art venues and wine rooms and theaters. So you can incorporate your original history that's here, we know, that, that garden, because of the history we learn. We can, uh, have a experience. And you also can set up a small bay or entry, not as far as a small surgical facility in one room where events paid, which is what Garden City is doing. From, uh, bay, there's cat spay and you're dog, you're firing a lot of spays. You're allowed to locate in the, uh, the dog spay or the blood mist to the hens and birds and things like that. They tend to recover a little better. The city could also promote your own little spay, your, but, um, so, um, you know, you have this thing that's seen in the day, everything we can convert is just positive, like in terms of our industry culture. We have also started a, a community project, which is called Spirit Hat House. People were doing these artistic cat houses, they're talking of the community payroll who are prepared to be at Charles Place and they're doing the murals. And he talked about changing the spirit of cat houses. The garden could get through the cat and be taken out of that, but people can walk around and can't see them. And then all of the hidden profession, there's, or, or, or non-surgical fixing of cats. And, and dogs potentially, even some of the, the, uh, the food animals like cattle and pigs. And, and those are going to be huge industries and, and there are opportunities to work with them towards a non-surgical spaying or option for cats. And those things are emerging on, on, on the market.
Great, thank you. I, I don't want to cut you off, but I, we're gonna have to start looking at our three-minute rule. Uh, because we're, we're gonna, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate those, those suggestions. I, particularly the non-surgical spay-neuter thing, if that gets developed, that could be pretty revolutionary. Yeah, yeah. Sure, sure. Well, let us know if you hear anything as that progresses. Uh, who else would like to speak? And again, this may seem unfair to some of you that maybe won't have as much time, but we do need to probably stick to the three-minute rule. We're, we're getting the message loud and clear from you. So go ahead and give us your name and address and.
I never had said, no, I was at work. And all my questions and information was answered by these people and said, um, one thing is that, I mean, we know that lots of the people in Garden City don't know that the Humane Society isn't taking care of our cats anymore, is that's on the door. But the other thing that I've noticed is that many of the Garden City residents don't know what the boundaries are of what is scared to be, because we think, well, it's eighty-seven one four. That's not true, because they're getting springs and I have a girlfriend that lives out in eighty-seven one four. She's in the mound, she can deliver all she wants to. So it's probably both of us can both do. Maybe that's not what's decided. I don't want, if that's the residency of the city.
No, we have a specific boundary, ge- geographic boundary, uh, so.
That's, that's what, that's my, my. For the residents.
I, I, I've made a note of that. Thank you, Deborah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Sharon, or the humidity, so I don't know what's going on in the world. In Garden City. And I just wanted, it's beginning to talk like, I think it's been a long time. West Vet, every year, it's our one-four-hour, we're in the sea, that's near, it's near here. Um, do not use universal chip readers, I don't think chip packs, I mean, there. And there are nervous cats and shit, and I'm like, I don't know what to do with it, I don't know what to do with it. And then it's like that, and it's, they have a chip then. So when I talked to the director of West Vet, we had a lot of conversations with her. She was trying very hard in her own, solving this problem. But it never, I can't say, I just need to, you can't rely on me to say, yeah, this is good. It was very hard, it was very hard around it.
Okay, well, that, I appreciate knowing that. Uh, we have our own chip reader, uh, the city has, that we check our dogs that we, that we pick up, so. Well, I don't know the difference between a cat chip and the dog chip. Well, I don't know the difference between a cat chip and the dog chip, be honest with you, if there's any difference at all. So I don't know the answer to that, but if, if the chips are the same, it wouldn't, it seems to me it would, would work the same. Who else would like to, would like to say a word? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, this is, I don't, I'm on Zoom. I don't know if you can hear me.
I'll get to you. I have somebody present here that raised your hand first, so you can come on up. Then we'll, we get through with those that are here personally, then we'll, we'll we'll get some testimony from online. So if you would, give us your name and address for the record and welcome.
And it was ten pages altogether. And maybe it was because two emails had five things each. And then there were two that I was just off the line. Now they don't think that we'd be exciting yet. Because it was so cheap. It was like fifty dollars to get these cats to get these fixed. And I went, I could jack pass and everyone's about, you could offer the same to help them fix. So I don't want kids having kids and cats, we have like five things a year. So, yeah, four months old, five times a year, so four or five times. But, yeah, so you can get a lot of things. So it's like, these three cats. Well, the, the feral cats, I just love them out there and put them on, like, they got some, um, that's the, the meetings together. The back, we may have been like, known each other before, but as long as they're fixed, then it solves the problem. So I'm just hoping for you guys because why do those cats get out of the house and come to the park?
Great. Well, thank you. Thank, thank you very much. No. I'd be, so where, where did you get them fixed? I know, but I mean, where did you take them to get them? Oh, okay. Okay, I, I got you. Okay. Sure. Thanks so much. I took notes. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Someday. Someday potentially. The, the fairgrounds improvements that have been in the news lately are in the area where the racetrack current, or racetrack is. And that's going to be a city park and it's unlikely that the city of Garden City will be annexing that area. So there won't be any. I don't anticipate any tax revenue coming from that particular project. In the future, once that regional park is built, I am expecting some complimentary development that probably would benefit the city. Or a cat sanctuary. A very, anyway, I won't say anything. I was, I was thinking it might be a nonprofit, so it still wouldn't. But anyway, but, so that's kind of a someday thing. I'm not anticipating that in the next few years. Yes. Yes, ma'am. We, we will see benefits, certainly. The interesting thing about growth is there's a average about an eighteen month lag time between when the growth occurs and when the revenue accrues to the city. Because assessments and valuations and the basis for the property tax are determined on one day of the year, January first. So if a project is completed on January tenth, then you've got to go through an entire cycle and a half before they assess value of that property accrues to the city tax rolls. But yes, it accrues the don't want to get into it very deeply tonight, but the, the the challenge we have throughout the valley is growth paying for itself in all kinds of areas. And our legislature is making that more difficult every cycle because they're siphoning off some of our historic revenue that comes to cities for other things. For example, they've siphoned off money from our sales tax to pay for courts. They've siphoned off money from the proper, the, the tax revenue sharing we get from liquor sales to fund the post-training academy. They put a cap on how much we can increase our property tax budget regardless of how much growth comes. So if we get too much growth, it can actually hurt our unit cost ability to provide services. In other words, it could make us reduce services. So it's a, it's kind of a messy thing. But we're going to have some high value projects come on where the cranes are particularly, that in the twenty twenty-five budget year, we should see revenue generated from that. So that, I'll bring, I'll, I'll have some more to say about that when we're concluded with the testimony, but thank you very much. Well, you can, you can. Well, certainly, we think about it all the time, about all kinds of things. The biggest expense increase we had this twenty twenty-three budget year was inflationary driven and it hit us. Police cars cost nine thousand dollars more this year than they did last year, for example. We buy four of those a year. You can do the math and that's our budget isn't allowed to increase that much, so we have to absorb that somewhere else. Payroll makes up payroll related items make up between seventy-five and eighty percent leases of our general fund revenues. We've got to have people to do the thing. So that increased significantly more as a percentage than our revenue. So we, we we have to be careful about that. We have a great demand to maintain the green belt. The cost of asphalt repairs has gone up faster than the percent increase in our property tax. And I can go on and on and on. So again, when we, when we're looking at priorities, we've got information tonight, we've got the balance somewhere. It's, do we reduce a staff person somewhere? Do we, I don't know. You pay me forty-two thousand dollars a year, maybe I'm not worth it. And we get, and we do something else. But we've got a point is, it's a zero sum game. So we have to increase revenue somewhere, somehow, or take advantage of something, or we move the money around within the finite amount of money that we have. And you balance that because we get more money every year and our expenses increase every year. It just kind of, so it's a it's not an easy task for your city council to deal with the hundreds of line items we have to deal with. So but I'm encouraged that we have some things we can explore on the basis of this and see if we can make some lemonade out of some lemons that you've, you've demonstrated tonight. Is there anyone else in the room here that wants to speak? Okay, thank you. We had someone online. Will you identify yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Jim Hudson. I'm not feeling too good. My wife is there tonight. Okay, yeah, we're, so seven nine nine five West Arapahoe Court. Thank you for addressing this issue. My wife's a passionate cat person, as you probably know. But I guess a couple of things, more questions. I was really surprised about that sign that excludes Garden City and you know, Ada County residents. And I think you answered some of those questions, but still about you know, what about Star or Meridian or Eagle? Do they have their own programs? Why, why, why is their city not on there if they you know, if they don't have a contract with them? So that was one question.
Well, let me, let me answer that one so I don't forget. Meridian, Boise, Kuna, Ada County, unincorporated, all have contracts with IHS. Eagle has a contract with IHS. Garden City does not, and the city of Star does not.
Oh, okay. Because I guess back when in two thousand or two thousand nineteen or whatever, it was mentioned that that time Eagle did not, they liked to do their own thing, but I guess since then they, they have a contract.
Yeah, and that's based on a conversation I had with Mayor Pierce.
Okay. Well, then, I mean, you raised the question too about Ada County's services and, you know, we're all in Ada County and we pay. I was looking at our taxes, almost a thousand dollars to Garden City last year and six hundred and seventy-five to Ada County. And I don't know, well, but you know, how that gets split up, but, but, yeah, you'd think leaving and living in Ada County if, if you lived just in the county and could have the services, why couldn't you have the services? You're gonna, you're gonna look into that. Then the other question is, do we have a, do we have a new estimate from Humane Society on what service would, would cost if we would want to go that way?
Well, well, that's, that's something the council will counsel me on, on whether to pursue that. I don't see any reason, you know, information doesn't cost anything.
Right, right.
Maybe because, you know, if history is any if history has any bearing on it, there'll be a significant difference in what we are currently spending for care for dogs for an IHS contract. But I, you know, we won't know till we ask. And I think the other issue is at least a hybrid program if we can start, at least if they're willing. You know, to deal with the community cats project as a, as a starting point. I don't know.
Yeah.
Whether we're going to get to chickens and goats and all of that or not. I'm not going to make any promises there, but I don't have any inhibition about asking about the community cats project in connection with what I talked about with talking to Ada County or the Humane Society. That's just taking advantage of volunteer labor to, to get these animals somewhere where we can stop the spread of population spread. So.
Yeah. Well, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of good presentations and informations tonight. I, I was sure and educated myself lately. So I got, the only other question is, I think was mentioned back when that contract was due, that Garden City was you know, a lot higher per capita than anybody else. And I guess what, that would be a question of why, why that was the case, but.
Well, that's something we can explore. Our last contract was equated eight dollars and seventy-five cents per capita. City of Meridian's current contract is five dollars and ninety cents about. That math could be off a few cents because I don't have an exact population count on them. The city of Boise is about six dollars and fifty cents per capita. And that, that could be, maybe we have more loading here than, than they do, but anyway, that's just.
We got more cats, huh? Per capita. Anyway, well, that's about all I had, but just, yeah, thanks a lot for all the efforts you and the council are putting into this. Appreciate it.
Well, I think the thanks goes to the group that came here tonight and I think we appreciate you taking the time to engage your city government. Donna's thinking, I've been engaging you, John, for about five or six, ten years, but any rate, your perseverance is noted, Donna. And I hope you get feeling better.
Oh, thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, I think we have a course charted. I'm going to hear from you. Okay, and we'll just see if we can come up with an internal action plan. Are there any of you that did not sign the kind of petitions, the informal petitions? If you want to know what we're doing, we need your, you need to send us your name and address. Okay, you, you, do you have your email? If you don't have your emails on it, you can go ahead and turn that into Lisa. You can Google Garden City Idaho, go to elected officials and it will have my email. If we, if you, if I have your email, I'll have my assistant create a group. And then we can report back when we learn some of these things after discussions with the county or, or whatever Heidi and I come up with, if that's acceptable to the group. That way we can communicate with you as interested parties. Okay? Okay. All right. We still got more to do tonight. You're welcome to hang out, you know, while we spend another. Or, or I'll call a short recess and let you get back to dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, turn the heat up before I go out. No, I'm teasing outside. Okay. Let's move down to item G two. This is a request for reconsideration on the approval of BSR FY twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. Council, this is a reconsideration request. If, if the request is granted, there won't be a hearing tonight. The request would, the granting of this request would simply set a hearing date to reconsider the decision that was made at the last meeting, I think it was. If it will be handled like any other motion, if there's a motion and a second, there'll be an opportunity to discuss deliberation and, and you will vote. If I don't hear a motion, it will die for lack of a motion. The request would be
If I don't hear a motion, it will die for lack of a motion. The request would be essentially denied. If I get a motion and no second, it will die for lack of a second. So those are kind of the options. There is, uh, one of you, the, a party that requested this? Okay, you have an opportunity to come up and tell the council why you want to re, want this reconsidered. Would you like to do that? We're just, we're just, we want you to be comfortable. Uh, but you can, you can state the case. Uh, council, the standard is the applicant, uh, is gonna let us know where the council went wrong, uh, on the decision. So, welcome. Sorry, you got caught behind the slow moving train there, so. Oh. Oh, good. Very good. Well, welcome. Pleasure to have you here. If you would give us your name. I think what we're really looking for is, uh, obviously you listened to the whole hearing, uh, you listened to the discussion. The council, after hearing everything that you presented, uh, made a decision. And the intent of a reconsideration is an opportunity for you to come and say, you, you guys missed it. And you're not interpreting your code correctly. Uh, you're not, I think in your reconsideration, uh, request, you challenged one of the areas of finding, if I'm remembering it correctly. So, so not to rehear it by going through all the reasons that, uh, that the council had before at the last meeting. Uh, if there's an area there where you think they just flat missed it, that would justify going through the hearing again, that's what we're looking for.
In two of your findings and finding two, the proposed design and various standards of protection, say, in general, well, now I feel that the building has a certain flaw, and the range has very little of the landscaping. Considering the temperature itself and rising, um, as increases are needed for that. And the project has a lot of escaping from the second floor, which is the backyard, which does nothing for, does nothing for, and is not visible to the neighbors and pedestrians. We know that the parking is sufficient. You know, okay, so, start a little bit before I can. Reading has said in all of the, in all of the, presentations before the council, before our design review. And I quote, um, I want to clearly express, I want to elaborate, we were both just laughing, and I was just, I guess, the worst everybody. From this, from the nearest guard, that hasn't been changed. The city gave down from the planning department, what they thought where they were efficient. The neighbors have said numerous times, numerous names, numerous, um, times, numerous names where they're efficient. The designer review has said on two different occasions, including from the national, where they're deficient. The council has said where they're deficient. Um, they have said, we have a parking problem, there's a parking problem. I'm extremely concerned about underparking situation. You come here and read an application that's significantly underparked, I line that property. It breaks my heart to think of the little home across the street. That's me. Many of the components of this project are real life. It's like the shoe is too small, the foot is too big. I think it's underparked. I hope this is the last of this family. They have ample opportunities and they have ample information from all of these different city, neighborhood, government entities. And they say that they want to collaborate. You've told them, we've all told them, it's too big, it's too massive, it's underparked. I see not collaboration, not even enough. So I wanted to say, uh, because I know deeply about that, but as far as my reconsideration was, it's because I believe that that's majority of this building is residential in the small commercial state, is the way it's in. To what is essentially the residential project. And I, one of the neighbors and majority of the city council, um, believe it's underparked. I believe that that in itself will, will create unsafe conditions, will be detrimental to the neighborhood and negatively affect this residence. Along with all the people who are creating here, they leave us basically. And since health, safety and welfare is not defined, and subsequent, they should not be applied, I consider, I'll proceed attorney. It follows this standard was not, when it is, that we look at when you approve this project. And this matter entirely, so it is the project. So I believe in Eric, and Jimmy was gathered, it has every time it's written, the proposed design makes sense of space and contribute to remove this earth, the different district neighborhoods, which is, um, the explanation stated additionally, use of proposed structural design is cohesive when we have adjacent pieces around. Well, the definition of cohesive was well integrated. And you all know that this building is not in accordance with the digits that are in the comprehensive plans and will create future land use designation. And it's absolutely not well integrated in regards to the block coverage, mass, volume, height to the adjacent buildings in the neighborhood. And it contradicts the designated goal to limit the vast size, building footprint is where footage. Additionally, since certain places not defined and should not be applied as preceding attorney ones, it follows this standard has not been nor can ever be, which was such a term, but it is. So you're erasing the standard now, from looking at the standard as part of, as a reason to approve this project. Um, I find really really frustrating that, um, you know, the city attorney says that there are cases that are not defined and should not be applied, including, um, the parking code because it's vague and subject as deciding by the court case. But yeah, these other, um, these other standards are also vague and subject, and you use them to show the project. So I respectfully ask the city council, reconsider this application. Um, I asked that the applicants redesign this project to be more human, to have appropriate parking and to do what they say that they always wanted to do, which is to collaborate. They've heard it numerous times from numerous entities, yet they forged on with their original plan. And I'm sorry, I'm really, I was not expecting this speech. Jim said that I could just be here and answer a question or two, so I'm probably prepared.
You had, you had me fooled.
I want to see prepared.
So I stand for questions. I hope they're not too hard. I, you know, I want to say one of them. I think this reminder of, of, of writing Senator John Henry, and I I have to look it up because I remember that, but I didn't really understand, I didn't remember exactly. Um, he was testing, testified before some committee, and it was, it was, it was, he said, how do you ask the man to be the last man to die for this day? I'm that last man. My neighbors are that last man. We are going to help with living this building that is out of place. It is not ruined. It is not out of the they park. We are going to have to be that last man for this day. We will stand. I will live with that mistake across the street from you. How, how do you ask me to do that? How do you ask my neighbors to do that?
Council, you have questions?
I don't know. Just thank you for, for, um, articulating that. Uh, when this came up, council, I'm one that voted against it for a lot of the reasons. I think you articulated it better than I did at the time. And as James said, I'd hate to see prepared. You know, you did very well, uh, on your feet and, and personally, I concur. Um, and I stand by, you know, my feelings about this development as well. It, uh, approving a project just because your code isn't good is, in my opinion, is not a good reason to approve bad development. And so, um, you know, I would, I would make a motion to re, to reconsider the approval of, of, uh, DSR FY twenty twenty-two zero zero one four, just done to, you know, maybe have the applicants come back before and I'd be interested to understand why there wasn't heated in the end of the device. And then maybe, you know, we could have a little bit more in-depth articulation of some of your points about the clarity and vagueness of some of the code.
Any other questions or comments, uh, you want to have with?
Will the applicant have a, an opportunity to respond?
Pardon me?
Does the applicant have an opportunity to respond to this, uh, request for reconsideration?
Yeah, yeah. What would happen if the council grants the request for reconsideration? We have a new hearing.
I understand that part, uh, today in this request.
No, does the, no. No, this is an opportunity for, in this case, uh, this is essentially an appeal. And, I've asked for grounds for the appeal. The health, safety component has been articulated. Because it isn't defined, how can it be met? You know, there's a heat signature issue. The, the determination that we, don't let me put words in your mouth if I get some of this wrong. Okay? That, uh, because the commercial portion of the project is incidental to the residential portion, that it would, would have been proper to uh, apply the residential parking code. We had quite a discussion about that. Mr. Wadums chimed in, but that's, that's what I'm picking up from, from what I've just heard. Making a sense of place finding when, uh, sense of place isn't defined, being comfortable with making a sense of place finding when even though that was undefined and not making a health and welfare finding uh, is inconsistent. I'm getting this wrong, interrupt. Okay. Okay. And then, uh, well, it doesn't represent a legal standard, uh, the representations regarding promises of engagement, collaboration, were not met, although I'm not sure that's a legal standard that, that, that we could use, so. That's my takeaway from, from what you said. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would add that I also don't feel that it fits in with the comprehensive plan of the city. So if you read the section of the civil real district and define of what they, that is supposed to be, what it's supposed to look like. You know, that was one reason that God might is, is, and I know the, the comprehensive plan sometimes has weight, sometimes doesn't, but it really, if you look at the comprehensive plan of the city, what's articulated for that district, in my opinion, the development doesn't fit in with what we have articulated of what the city wants to see in that district.
So, so that's, that's where we are. So there's an opportunity, uh, that you want to have some engaged, uh, appellant here, uh, you can do so. You're ready to do some deliberation among yourselves, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to ask, uh, Mr. Waddams a question?
Sure. If you don't mind, just stay in there while we do this, then we wouldn't have to recall you if we have a question. Okay.
Mr. Waddams, i- is it, um, is it appropriate to approve a, uh, let me change it. Is it appropriate to disapprove a, an application if, uh, you're unable to articulate the specifics along the lines and in the order that a recent court case, uh, informed us about?
Mayor, council member Heller, I, I mean, that's, that's a great question and her argument is, uh, a very interesting argument. Uh, what I hear the argument being is if it's too vague to deny, then it's also too vague to approve. And that's an interesting issue. Uh, I think the council's responsibility is to either approve or deny it absent a moratorium. And, and the council, um, and the mayor in the council decided not to do a moratorium. So I think um, the matter of business is either approve it or deny it, but it has to be one or the other. And in this situation, the council approved findings of fact, includes a lot of decision and, and the wording that's in there. And so the, the question here is, is whether the council aired uh, by making those findings. And I think that's what her position is. And if the council believes that's true, then I would say, take it, take a second look at it. Um, if the council is comfortable with that written decision, then, you know, that's your prerogative as well.
Yeah.
So it's a great question without a great answer.
You don't have to decide if there's been an error tonight. You have to decide if it's worth another look.
So I guess it might, based on what you said, it's vague on either side, I would say those deserve a second look, just to discuss that question.
Did I hear a motion from you earlier?
You did, but I can withstand it.
I'm sorry. I thought you were, you were gonna make a motion. I didn't take it.
I was kind of waiting for the discussion. I was gonna do it.
Well, the floor is yours, Councilmember Jacobson.
Well, based on, based on Mr. Waddams' comments about, um, you know, the vagueness of both, I would like to request reconsideration on approval of DSR FY twenty twenty dash zero zero one four to be able to discuss those issues again and re, and re, um, have the, have the development of the project rediscovered.
Based on my perception. Based on my perception that the appellant has standing and that it's possible the council aired in labeling this cohesive to the neighborhood versus not being well-integrated. I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to grant the reconsideration request for DSR FY twenty twenty two dash zero zero one four. Is there further discussion on the motion? Here now the clerk call rule.
Council member Paige.
Yes.
Council member Heller.
Yes.
Council member Jacobson.
Yes.
Thank you, one next order of business, council, we need to set a hearing date. And let me look up here. Ms. Thornborough, can you come in and counsel us a little bit on determining a hearing date? She's up here, but she's in the other room, you can sit down, thank you. We'll give her a minute to get in here, find out if she's listening in.
She was.
You passed the test.
And mayor, members of the council, yes, I was listening.
The council has moved to reconsider, if you heard, and I don't want to set a date and because there's, this sets in motion, some other things that I'm not recalling as far as renoticing and whatever.
Certainly, mayor, thank you. The easiest thing to do is fully renotice and if there is anything that's considered new evidence that is considered, and so in doing that, I was trying to look at the calendar before I came in here. November twenty eighth or December twelfth, well, November twenty eighth would certainly, December twelfth would be pushing it to.
I think we're gonna have to push it to January.
January nine. Just because we need.
I want to make sure Zaisley has do you have your calendar with you? Do you have your calendar with you? I, I don't want to set a date and you're in Hawaii or somewhere.
Mr. Mayor, same for the applicant, I think the applicant's listening.
Same for the applicant.
And mayor, just in, in discussing the agenda on the ninth, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, I think right now we have four ordinance amendments scheduled and I think three subdivisions scheduled in for the ninth. So I may select, suggest the twenty third and that we won't be having a city council meeting in December.
January twenty third? Is that?
Yes, and then I, unless, yes, considering the holidays in December.
Okay, because we only have one meeting in December.
With, with that being said, there's always the caveat with subdivisions that they tend to get bumped around.
Council member Heller.
May I ask Jen a quick question?
Sure, absolutely.
Jen, you, you, you said new evidence. Is that a definitive qualification for reconsideration or?
Mayor, council member Heller, no. The problem would be if the council considers or hears anything that's considered to be new evidence, and then the, the then there would need to be the public's ability to have a public hearing.
I understand, yeah, thank you.
So what would need to occur is the appellant would need to articulate. And if you articulate these reasons to bring back for the hearing. You, you like the way I said it apparently when I was summarizing what you said. Okay. Why does she need to submit, Jenna? Anything additional, not really?
She does not.
Okay, all right.
And mayor, may I also clarify, I just did ask Mr. Waddams, if the council so chooses to stipulate that it stays on the record. He did indicate to me, he can speak for himself, that you could stipulate and that it's that the reconsideration is on record documents only. Similar to an appeal.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just elaborate on that, just if I may, so on a request for reconsideration, I think the council has discretion on whether they wanted to keep it just with the record and technically, that's probably the safest play because the standard is whether the council aired, and it's hard to say the council aired based on new information. But I've also always taken the stance that the council wants to give both sides an opportunity to submit something new that's within your discretion, but I think it's fair for both the applicant, Ms. Sewell, and our friend over here to know whether the patients submit new information or just you're gonna make a decision based on argument in the record.
You know, since, since the, essentially since the appeals on the basis of the record that was established, that'd be my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, that, that was the purpose of my question, asking Ms. Thornborough.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, if that would be the case, then we wouldn't have the noticing requirements to deal with. And I might suggest that a December twelfth could also be a date to be considered.
Oh, okay, because we, we don't have a notice and requirement if it's on the basis of the record that was established. Well, we need to know if the parties are available on December twelfth. So one party isn't available, how about January ninth? Okay, I've got a head nod here. Ms. Sewell, are you available on January ninth?
I don't know about Ms. Sewell, but this is
Oh, I'm sorry.
Matthew Clark, and I am not available on the ninth of January.
Okay, how about January twenty third for both of you? Looks like January twenty third.
Is, 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 yeah, Kathy, are you available?
I'm not sure if Kathy's responding, what we can do is set the date for January twenty third and if for some reason that needs to be pushed out again, we'll notify the parties and take an action of December twelfth or January ninth meetings.
Mr. Mayor, just one last point of order, just for, as I'm thinking through this, sometimes really the only time I can think of where new information is helpful is where the parties come up with a compromise, like if there was a compromise between the applicant and and that would be something I would think the council would know.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well.
If not, then I would recommend on the record.
How much lead time for noticing, Jenna? Is that like?
Mayor, if everything's ready, I, I might propose right now twenty five days.
Okay. So my recommendation is we hear the appeal on the record. If if there's a change in that from one or more of the parties that wants to we can amend this action on December twelfth and have time to notice it for new information. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to set the hearing date for January twenty third, based on the record established, yet the last, whatever, it's the last. When's the last, when did we make this decision?
Two weeks ago, well, I haven't, I haven't. Our cover twenty fourth project approved.
Okay, so the motion is to reconsider approval on this, this DSR number in the October twenty fourth meeting to a date certain of January twenty third, twenty twenty three. Somebody make that motion.
I can relate that well, Mr. Mayor, I request for reconsideration, amend or date certain of January twentieth, third, twenty twenty three.
Okay, second, had a motion and a second, any discussion? You're none, let's get everybody on the record, so.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Jacobson? Council member Page?
Yes. Hey. That concludes the business on our agenda tonight, council, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn the regular council meeting.
Okay, most adjourned, do I have a second?
Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.